All right. Good morning and Happy New Year, everyone. It is 9:01 on January 4th. We will call this meeting to order. We would ask that folks who are present if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation delivered by Pastor Pam Mason of St. Paul's African Methodist Episcopal Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Pam, the floor is yours.
Let us pray. Good morning, God. Thank you for being able to witness 2022. Lord, we thank you for the learning experiences and growth opportunities unveiled in 2021. We meet the challenges of today with excitement, new discovered possibilities, and determination to model positive attributes as we build. We pray for our mayor and each city council person, that they would effectively balance the weight of their service as they work with passion, unity, sound decision-making, and a heart for Wichita. May their decision-making be sound and measurable as they sort through matters together. May they acknowledge the victories as they continue to serve with integrity and one goal. Remind each of us that all people matter. We pray for all personnel and their families. Lord, we thank you for the progress we have witnessed. We thank you for the hurdles that we have crossed. We thank you for those who have never lost hope. We are encouraged and realize that we will get through this together, together. Lord, we ask for a special covering over our communities, our residents, and all who visit ICT. Lord, we pray we need you as the pandemics prevail. We've all experienced and are experiencing the effects as we move forward. Keep us safe, keep us aware, and keep us health-conscious. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America. In this republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, let's jump in. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on December 28th, 2021.
Has every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, then I'll make a motion to pass the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Councilmember Bluebog. Clerk will open. All members cast the vote. Ever receives 60 a votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 10.
Has every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion on the consent agenda? If there is no discussion on consent agenda, then I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented. Motion has been seconded by Councilmember Bluebog. Clerk will open. All members cast the vote. Ever receives 60 a votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the City of Wichita Cedric County Food Systems Master Plan.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Before I jump in, I do want to quickly say thanks to everyone who helped work on this master plan. There are a few folks here who'd like to voice their support when it's appropriate, and some people watching the livestream, but I just wanted to make sure that I got an opportunity to thank everyone because so many people worked on this even before the process of putting together this document. So it's a line of work that goes back almost a decade. So for some history of this master plan, there's a little bit of project timeline here. The work began in the fall of 2019. It was launched with Eileen Horn and New Venture Advisors. She was our hired consultant. Phase 2 extended beyond our original projections due to COVID, but wrapped up in September of 2020. Phase 3 here, you see, is where the bulk of the plan was written based on these key findings, which led to the fourth phase presentation to our elected officials and plan adoption. We had a well-rounded group of steering committee members, as you see here. This group met at least monthly, shaped the plan from the outset, and provided valuable input along the way, bringing to fruition the plan we're discussing today. And it had robust staff support engaged in this process as well. For the food plan process, nearly a year's worth of community effort led to the creation of the plan. The Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita served as the lead planning organization, collaborating closely with City of Wichita and Cedric County. A community-wide survey that was opened in January went through September of 2020, gathered perceptions of the local food system from over 2,200 residents, and engaged them in prioritizing the plan's goals. The survey process was critical to help narrow down the list of potential food plan goals from eight to a final three. We had 25 pop-up events where steering committee members attended community organization meetings. We engaged them in the food planning process during those pop-up events. We also held six roundtable events with over 120 stakeholders from the food system. They provided key insights on policy barriers and opportunities for each of the proposed goal areas. And finally, a final plan prioritization step. Had 60 key stakeholders assisted with the prioritization of the objectives and action steps in the final plan. The final order of objectives and actions in the plan reflects the input of this group and reflects a priority order that city and county officials should consider. So how the food plan is organized. The plan lays out an array of potential actions to guide and foster the development of the local food system in Wichita and Cedric County. These actions are recommended with a view to the future. This plan is meant to be accomplished over 10 years with adaptations and updates built in at five-year intervals. The plan is organized from broad goals to specific recommendations. The goals are general statements of desired outcomes for our community, and these represent a future vision for the City of Wichita and Cedric County. Objectives are more specific, measurable strategies to help guide local work to reach each goal, and each goal has multiple objectives that support it. And finally, the action steps are specific policies, programs, and initiatives prioritized to meet goals and objectives. Goal 1, Foster Food System Coordination and Education. Coordinating efforts among food system stakeholders in our community will help ensure that limited resources are used efficiently and that partnerships can be established to better serve the community. Education programs for consumers highlight the benefits of local food, how to prepare it, how to budget for it. Education programs for producers help them build strong agriculture businesses, excuse me, and support beginning farmers and entrepreneurs as they launch new businesses, and a strong local food system is possible, and collaboration is how we get there. Goal 2 is to improve access to healthy food. Improving access to healthy food invests in the health and well-being of our community members. When community members have access to healthy, affordable, culturally appropriate foods, they're more likely to thrive. Supporting transportation infrastructure to make it easier for families to get to healthy food locations, and investing in programs that make food more affordable help all of us, especially the most vulnerable in our community. Goal 3 is to increase local food production. Increasing local food production in our community can positively impact the regional economy and improve community resilience. When consumers and institutions buy directly from local producers, their dollars stay in the local economy, providing income for farmers and vendors throughout the agriculture supply chain. When residents grow their own food, it increases community food security and resilience as families learn to feed themselves. The plan includes the creation of a Wichita-Cedric County Food and Farm Council to serve as advisory body to the City of Wichita and Cedric County. The council would provide a forum for food system collaboration by convening stakeholders from all sectors of the food system, engaging stakeholders in developing policy recommendations to the governing bodies, and increasing awareness of funding opportunities amongst food system partners. Food policy councils are sometimes known by other names, such as Food and Farm Councils or Food and Agriculture Coalitions, but many of these names reflect their scope and region in which they operate. But they all bring together residents, stakeholders, and policymakers to examine how the local food system operates and to develop recommendations that will improve the entire food system. These recommendations can take the form of policy systems or environmental changes, and here you see a map of where some other similar councils exist. Here you see a sample of what a potential appointed council roster could look like. You see various stakeholders throughout the food system and all steps of the process. And this is just a sample of what one roster could look like. A Food and Farm Council, along with cross-system network, is needed for this work and will aid in the work for other food-based initiatives. The plan also supports the city's recent discussion of ARPA funding to increase access to healthy foods and census tracts desperately impacted by the pandemic. The plan includes strategies for increasing access to healthy food and could inform a request for proposals for programs that achieve city council objectives. The work from the master plan is the potential to inform and assist with other future efforts as well. Here you see, reflects the discussion for healthy corner stores. For the next steps. If the plan is approved, city and county staff will develop a proposal for the composition of the Joint Food and Farm Council and help bring that to fruition. So our recommendation is that the council adopt the City of Wichita Cedric County Food System Master Plan. For any questions you might have.
There are questions for staff. See none? Thank you. We'll open it up to public input. Is there members of the public who'd like to come speak to this plan? If so, just make your way towards the front.
My name is Claudia Honbaum. I'm a registered licensed dietitian and have worked on, with the steering committee and before the steering committee on this initiative since 2017. In my years as a registered dietitian, for more than 20 of those years, I worked with schools and communities to increase choices for healthy options for kids and families. During that time, during those 20 years, I found that there was a very key role that local government played in the sustainability and support of those actions. A simple example is transportation. For people who do not have transportation, public transportation is so key. Schedules and routes and the availability to bring things on the bus are key to individuals that lack that transportation. It is also my honor to have talked with a lot of local growers. We have seen that there are a lot of entrepreneurs that can support the economy and increase choices for healthy food options, particularly fruits and vegetables which are lacking in the diets of many individuals. I encourage you to support the Master Food Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome.
Hi there. Thank you. My name is Megan Greenway, 1805 North 119th Street. I am co-owner of Ori's Farm Fresh, which is a local urban farm on the northwest side of town. We grow a variety of seasonal vegetables and a lot of garlic on our farm. That's what we're most known for. I am a member of the Steering Committee of the Master Food Plan, and I'm really excited about this plan for a whole host of reasons. I've donated a lot of my time as a member of the Health and Wellness Coalition's Food Policy Committee, and several years ago, it seems like we became aware of a need for a structured food system master plan. And I really feel like the past two years have even increased the necessity for something like this because the pandemic has really exposed a lot of vulnerabilities in the industrialized food system. I am supportive of the entire plan. Everything is pretty exciting to me, but a few things that are particularly exciting to me as a local producer is I'm hopeful that we'll be able to adopt some clear and grower-friendly urban agriculture policy with this plan. I'm excited that it can facilitate the growth of our local food system as a whole. It would be great if more local growers started to offer their products to the community so we can all maybe rely on the national grocery chain stores a little bit less in our daily lives. And I'm also excited about fostering a reconnection between members of our community and the folks and the families who are growing their food. And increasing the access to local healthy foods is really important, and I'm hoping that we can also find a way to incentivize local experts to help share their knowledge to make it more accessible and approachable for average families to know how to prepare the fresh local foods that they can find here in town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Shelley Rich. I live at 3310 West Wind Bay Court in District 5, and I facilitate the Health and Wellness Coalition, and we have been committed to coordinating and help connect community partners to promote physical activity and good nutrition to every generation living in the greater Wichita area. And I'm very excited for the objectives and action steps in this plan. I think that it is what the City of Wichita needs, and so I ask for your support in passing this plan because I think that all of the objectives and action steps are needed, but I'm especially looking forward to fostering food system coordination and education in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the community? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. This is a great day, a great day to be able to present this to the city council, and I look forward to the opportunity too when it's presented to our friends across the street at the county. I first just want to give some praise and accolades and some thanks. Thanks to the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita. This absolutely would not come to us if it were not for them, and the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita is truly made up of residents who just care and want to make our community a better place to live, learn, earn, play, and pray. And I've had the opportunity to be involved with this organization for years, served as the chair, also served with the Food Policy Committee, which was really originated because of the food desert study that the Health and Wellness Coalition did back in 2013. And that's where we raised the basic awareness in the community that 25% of our population lives in a food desert. We have 44 square miles of food deserts, and it drew upon the community to understand the necessity of getting people to food and food to people in a way that we'd never seen before. So it's been almost a decade that we've been working on this initiative, and then in 2018, thanks to the generous funding of the Kansas Health Foundation, we were able, as the Health and Wellness Coalition, to hire New Venture Advisors, thanks to both of those entities. The funding from the Kansas Health Foundation provided the funding for the consultant, New Venture Advisors, so that we could proceed with this plan and have some content expertise and rely on an organization that had helped other communities navigate through this. So also want to thank staff. I know Cory, I know Dante, lots of folks have had time invested in this, and more than time, but also a passion, because we know it's so important for our community and for our community members. As I mentioned, this is a community-driven initiative, and I'm hopeful that the city will also be, and the county will also be, a part of this process as we move forward to make sure that everybody has one of the most basic needs, access to healthy food. So thank you again to everyone who's been involved in the process, and thank you to the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita.
Councilmember Frye.
Sir, prior to serving on the city council, I could fit what I knew about a food system master plan into my pinky. In fact, I thought a food desert was a hamburger with nothing on the side. Sorry.
Okay, that was actually pretty funny. We should recognize that.
Thank you. But in all seriousness, I do want to thank Councilmember Tuttle and the Food System Master Plan Steering Committee for educating me and our community. I know it's been a long labor of love and dedication, 10 years, I think you said, Councilmember Tuttle. In fact, you look like you're on cloud nine over there, you're practically levitating. So I fully support this. What I'm really excited about is goal number 3, and the economic opportunities tied to the increase in local food production, keeping those dollars in our local community and supporting one of our target industries of agricultural. So I think this plan is very robust. There's a whole list of reasons why I'm supporting it, and I'm not going to go into that because it's already all there. But thank you, committee, for bringing this to us.
Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you, Mayor. And I've probably asked the most questions about this going along through the process, but I'm excited about the opportunities, mostly echoing what Councilmember Frye said, being an agricultural state and the opportunities that are out there for keeping more of the produce right here at home, as well as the environment we're in right now, trying to get everybody well and live as healthy as we can. So I think this is a good step forward, and I'm excited to see where it goes. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, then I will recognize Councilmember Tuttle for a motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I am going to enthusiastically make a motion that the city council adopt the City of Wichita Cedric County Food System Master Plan.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open. All members cast the vote. Ever receives 70 a votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Degras Reporting Center contract.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Degras Reporting Center provides alternatives to incarceration for folks with substance abuse issues, and that's not necessarily folks just who have substance abuse charges. It can be a different underlying charge. For those individuals, there's a variety of services offered by this program. Some background, this used to be a partnership with the county. In 2016, they stepped away, and the City of Wichita took this on and continued to provide these services to people in our community. Since then, the program has been worked to be cost-effective reporting model that would meet the needs of the city and of the municipal court. So it now serves only our court and city misdemeanors. GEO has been serving as the provider for this service since that time and provides wraparound services, including case management, supervision, and treatment. And another really critical piece that they offer is BIP, and that's Batter's Intervention Program. And what that does is allow these individuals who have substance abuse issues to receive all those services cost-free, and that can significantly increase the likelihood of their success in all of those programs. We requested proposals from qualified agencies, and we received only one proposal, and that was from our current service provider, GEO Reentry Services. They're currently located at 348 South IDA, near bus routes and away from establishments that serve alcohol or have those type of gatherings. The contract is for one year with four one-year renewal periods. The annual contract is $418,860 for 1% increases included annually. The court is allowed to have 50 individuals in the program monthly, and we don't anticipate it this time going past that. And the funding comes from the Special Alcohol Programs Fund. The contract has been approved as to form by the Law Department, and I would, at this time, recommend that the city council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
All right. Is there any questions for staff? If there's no questions for staff, well done. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract with GEO Reentry Services and authorize the necessary signatures. Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open. All members cast their vote.
Mayor Whipple, would you cast your vote, please?
Yeah, my screen, I'm like the worst millennial ever because my screen doesn't have the option up, so I'm just going to give it a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Somehow messed up my tablet. There we go. With the result of 7 yes to 0 nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Evergreen Community Center and Library Art.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. I'm Jamie Prothro, Director of the Wichita Public Library.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Anna Lopa, City Manager's Office.
We're absolutely excited to bring you the conceptual art design for the Evergreen Community Center and Library that's coming to a conclusion. And I think what you're going to see is incredible joy and representation of the history of the Evergreen neighborhood, interests of the community, and hopefully you'll be delighted as well. Sorry. We actually had several community engagement opportunities with three local artists who were contracted with the project's architect, Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye. Specifically in October, there was an open house where residents were able to provide concepts and respond to themes and really help bring together the culmination of three different artists' modes and mediums. They used that feedback to create a cohesive design, and you'll see in the imagery that the idea of flowers is actually the unity that the artists have brought together. This information and concept was presented to the DAG on December 6th, and then on December 13th, it was brought to the Design Council for approval. And Anna is going to go through a bit of the concept.
All right, so what you guys are looking at is a mood board of elements, colors, patterns that stood out during the open house held on October 20th. A connected theme was adopted by all three artists, used flowers in representation of residents who live in the neighborhood. Flowers native to different nationalities and regions were identified by all three artists. This is a site plan that highlights the areas designated for public art inside the Evergreen Community Center and Library. Armando Minares is a Mexican interdisciplinary artist and designer. His artistic His artistic practice is guided by themes, displacement, collaboration, and empowerment of open spaces for the development of social change strategy and creative expression. He is co-founder of the house, La Casa de la Semilla, founder of the art collective ICT Army of Artists and co-founder of the North End Urban Arts Festival. He is commissioned to design and create three murals inside of the center. His inspiration for the pieces are items that represent growth and community. A connected theme was adopted by the artists, used flowers that are native to all the nationalities in the North End and in District 6. Arbol de Vida or Tree of Life are ceramic vessels that display stories, narratives with patterns, elements, color, and nature. The curvature and uniqueness of the front wall by the reception at the center provides a visual effect that welcomes visitors to the center. Armando is incorporating elements, form that already, that invite the visitors at the center and elements in the already existing mural outside of the center. He is also using a monochromatic wall in one of the collaboration areas that will display floral foliage throughout the wall. Armando saw an opportunity to incorporate historical components to this wall emphasizing places, people, and historic moments. The focus for this is a geographical and iconic places in the North End. For that, he will use boxes or shadow boxes that will hold objects, memorabilia, and photographs. Here's another image of the collaboration area without the shadow boxes. His third mural will be in the classroom and it is a lotus flower iconic, an iconic representation of the Asian community. The extended hand brings an element of people with a poetic sense of calmness. Here's another visual of what that mural will look like in the classroom. Our second artist is Heather Byers. Heather is a Wichita-based muralist with an extensive portfolio that features subjects such as portrait, floral designs, and geometric prints. She is commissioned to create a four-feet-tall and 70-feet-long elongated mural along the south wall of the center. She will be using flowers as a concept for this. She will be layering pieces of fabric with paint on top to bring out patterns and lines. Heather will be working with the North End Historical Society to bring out pictures and photos of members in the community. Her second work of art will be stylized lines and bright colors to bring out fun in the kids' reading area. She will be capturing creative ways that children find to read. Our third artist is Carlos Palomino. He is a local graphic designer and virtual artist, and visual artist, pardon me. His concept of art is growth and self-sufficiency. He will display cultural symbology with graphics of ecosystems including animals, flowers, and insects. He will incorporate simple cultural designs to clean, to the already clean and modern interior design. He will simplify book stacks and make them look like patterns found in Hispanic, Asian, Native American, and African cultures. His design will portray native flowers, plants, and animals as well. And with that, we stand for questions.
Are there questions of staff? Seeing none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you. I just want to say that this is the culmination of four years of my work and then work before that with Janet Miller. And I know it's the art today, but I think this really tops off what the Community Center and Library is going to be. I'm very impressed with the work that SJC F is the design group on this and then bringing together three artists, working with our staff and our team that is working on the renovation to actually have art that is, follows the themes that came from the community as well as art that looks like it fits together. So, when you have three artists and bring them together and actually understand what the community wants and then bring it together to look like it all belongs together, I think is quite a feat. So, very excited for this last bit on the Community Center and cannot wait for its opening. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just also wanted to say. There we go. Thanks, Mayor. Also wanted to say kudos to Councilmember Claycomb for your leadership on this and pushing to this point. And staff, this is amazing artwork. I think this is, this is great. Love to see more of this throughout our city, so great job. I think the community will love that and again, just, I think the interior with all of that artwork is just going to be amazing and definitely reflective of the diversity of our community. So, great job.
Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, the chair will recognize Councilmember Claycomb as this resides in District 6.
Thank you. I move that we approve the conceptual design for art for the Evergreen Community Center and Library.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open and roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2021-51, city zone change from single-family residential to multifamily residential with a protective overlay generally located east of North Hoover Avenue and 675 feet north of West Central Avenue.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. This item is being presented today because there have been valid protest petitions submitted.
Scott, can you just introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, sir. Scott Waddle from the Planning Department. My apologies. So, this item is being presented because there's been a valid protest petition submitted. Property owner has applied for a zone change from SF5 Single Family to MF18 Multifamily with a protective overlay, which is detailed in the staff report, in order to develop triplexes on site. About the property, the property is generally located north and east of the intersection of Hoover and Central Avenue. Property is undeveloped and it's roughly .2 acres in size. In terms of context, property to the north, east, and south is zoned SF5 Single Family Residential and developed with single-family dwellings and accessory structures. Property to the west is zoned SF5 and TF3 Two-Family Residential and developed with single-family dwelling units and duplexes, with the duplexes being constructed most recently in 2004. So, here's a map that shows the zoning in the area. You can see mostly white of the SF5 Single Family and the yellow of the TF3 Two-Family zoning. In terms of review, on December 2nd, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of rezoning the property to TF3, which is different than what the applicant had requested, which was MF18. They recommended this with a protective overlay and there were three members of the public that spoke in opposition at the MAPC meeting. Their comments centered on a concern for multifamily development in the area. One commenter presented the alternative of the TF3 zoning during their comments and the applicant's agent indicated that the owner would, could agree to TF3 zoning, so would be supportive of that. On December 6th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended approval unanimously of the TF3 Two-Family Residential zoning, subject again to a protective overlay. One member of the public spoke at this hearing with concerns about multifamily residential development. In terms of protests, two valid protest petitions have been received for the requested zone change that exceeded the 20% state threshold and came in at about 31.2% of the protest area. Therefore, the request must be approved by a supermajority vote, six of seven votes. In terms of actions, it is recommended that the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading, which would require six of seven votes. As always, you also have alternative options. Those include the following: you can deny the zone change, which would require five of seven votes; you can approve the zone change with modifications to the MAPC recommendation, which requires six of seven; you can approve the zone change subject to planning staff recommendation, six of seven votes; or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which would require a simple majority of four of seven votes. So, that is a brief overview. I'll take you through some of the photos and images and then stand for questions. So, here's the site outlined in red. You can see the duplexes to the west, single families surrounding it on other sides. Here's the map from the Comprehensive Plan Future Growth Concept Map showing recommendation for residential in the area. Here's the protest map showing two property owners that submitted protests and you can see that that calculated to just above 30% of the protest area. Here are photos from the area. This is looking at the site. It's looking at the duplexes to the north and west. This is looking at the single-family house directly south of the property across the So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item?
This does not see public input.
Oh, it's already gone public? Yes. Okay. Because it was MAPC, the public hearing has already happened for this item, so thank you, Legal, for the reminder. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? There's no further discussion. Chair recognizes Councilmember Claycomb as this resides in District 6.
Thank you. And I move that city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the zone change to TF3, subject to the protective overlay number 381, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion's made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open and roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
City Manager's Performance Evaluation and Salary Adjustment.
Is Grace here to present the item or Bob? Are you going to do it? Do you want to tell us how?
Mayor, typically, the council members that have been involved in the review process have made a brief presentation.
All right. Well, the chair recognizes Councilmember Tuttle.
All right, and I'll lead into my fellow council members for their input and advice. But, we, as a council, took some opportunities to review our city manager's performance for 2019 and also for 2020 and we felt that over the past two years and during the entire career that we've been fortunate enough to have Mr. Layton since 2008, that his performance warranted to have not only the cost of living increase, but also the merit increase. I do want to point out, too, that it's noted in the green sheet that we're doing two years now because Mr. Layton agreed back in 2020 due to the economic environment at the time that he would pause his own merit increase from 2019, which I just think also reflects on the tremendous character that he has and the passion for the city. When you look at the city's mission of being an exceptionally well-run city, I think that that definitely is shown in the work that Mr. Layton does. So, I will divert also to Councilmember Frye to see if he has anything else that he'd like to add or any other council members who were involved in the process.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I don't know that I can add too much, Councilmember Tuttle. You wrapped it up pretty well, just reminding the public that this is a two-year evaluation and we did the 2019 evaluation in 2020, but decided to defer the compensation because of the economy. And then this last summer, Councilmember Tuttle and then Mayor Whipple and I formed the group to do the 20, along with the rest of the council and executive session, to do the 20 evaluation. So, we were playing a little catch-up, obviously, but it is over a two-year period. So, the 21 evaluation will take place next year. Don't really have anything else to add other than, I thank manager for the work that he's done. His last two years have been difficult with the economy and the MAX and COVID and everything and you've done a great job leading us through that, helping us to be better informed and make good decisions. We've had robust policy discussions, which is always good. But, again, your leadership, especially with the staff and the concerns going through the last two years has been fantastic and thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And my comments weren't probably as varnished as they should have been initially because I wasn't prepared for this, but just for the public information, and this is all part of the information that we receive and it's also online, but, and Councilmember Frye did a great job, but I thought I might just take it a step further of when we were evaluating and looking at the last two years' performance, there was an extremely long list of accomplishments. But, I'd just like to, for the public, highlight a few things that we thought were mentionable was the Small Business Portal that we have, our Places for People Plan, which is really going to help with our infill, the Multimodal Transit Center, the Walters Branch Library in District 3, the Branch Library Study, North Junction Federal Funding, which was huge not only for our community but for our region, the Northwest Water Treatment Plant Federal Funding, the COVID responses was mentioned, Affordable Housing Fund, the CLAP Master Plan Phase 1, PPE for Small Businesses, Mounts, South Lakes Pickleball Complex, federal funding for business during the COVID recovery, the ARPA Relief Fund Expenditure Plan, Park Recreation and Cultural Services merger, ASR Federal Funding, abandoned building demolition process improvements, and the Grocery Store and Food Deserts Study and the Master Plan that we just approved today. So, those are just a few of the accomplishments in the last two years and with the altered work environment that we've all had and just a true change in our community. You've navigated us so well, so I'm a raving fan and thank you for all you do.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. Is there input from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. We'll open this item for discussion. Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Can't really say too much more than my colleagues have said, so I'd just say I definitely appreciate your leadership, Bob, throughout my term in office, but especially the last two years with everything that was going on. You've been a steady leader, keeping us informed and really helping us to make the best decisions we can for the city, so I definitely appreciate that.
So, further discussion? Councilmember Frye.
Seeing no further discussion, I'm happy to make a motion if that's acceptable this time.
We're open to discussion at this time. Is there further discussion? All right. Well, I wanted to address just a few things. I've received somewhat a pushback on this process when it comes to the manager and I wanted to make some clarifications on what, how the process has been and where we're going with it. First, when we evaluate the city manager, the city manager gets, it's almost a rubric where this is what, that rubric, what we're be waiting the next evaluation against. So, when folks who, I think, who have reached out and said, "Well, this right here I disagree with, so the city manager shouldn't get a raise," we have to stay professional and we have to stay focused on what came out of our sessions when we decided what would be, as a group, what would be weighed against the manager for consideration. So, with that, it's similar, yeah, I teach on the side. I think folks know that eventually I want to be a college professor. I can't deter from what the rubric is to get a grade in that class and then just like pop up this other curriculum over here and try to hold that against a student. And it wouldn't be professional to do that against an employee.
wouldn't be professional to do that against an employee as well. So I want to make it clear that there is specific, uh, criteria that was discussed during these meetings in which, um, that is what the evaluation is graded off of it. And frankly, that's the way it should be. It shouldn't be done based off emotion. Uh, also, I, I've received, um, some concerns about, uh, uh, the, the raise here, and I, I do want to just highlight what Councilmember Tuttle has said already. This is a two-year raise. Uh, our city manager, because of the economic, um, the economic climate, deferred, or decided not to take the first raise during that year as we were balancing the budgets. Now financially, we're in a better position as a city, uh, so we are giving him the raise in which he earned, but hasn't received from the, uh, work in 2019. So this isn't just one big lump raise. This is catching up because he, and every employee got a raise in 2019. We did not look to punish our employees, uh, during 2019, or, excuse me, 2020 budget cycle, uh, because of COVID, except the manager. He chose not to take his raise because of, uh, the economic climate at the time. So now we are just making him whole from what he earned in 2019. Further, this is 2020's evaluation. Um, we should have got this out earlier. Uh, I, I agree with folks who have reached out and asked, "Why are you doing it, uh, you know, uh, in the first week of January?" I believe our ordinance actually says we should be doing this in July or June. Um, moving forward, I'm hoping that we get this back on schedule, because I think it is confusing. This is not a reflection of 2021. This is 2020's. Uh, so we should be working on 2021's evaluation, um, coming up, uh, in the next couple of months. Also, I want to just talk a bit about, folks have reached out and said, you know, "Well, the salary for this position is a lot." Um, and I think that, that those sentiments are taken out of context. Uh, I think that you have to look at other public employees who have similar responsibilities. So when I did some research, I looked into, where are the top paid people over at Wichita State University? Uh, there's about five to 10 people who make more than our city manager does. Um, I looked into superintendents and other, uh, types of public, um, employment that has similar responsibilities. And, and frankly, uh, our city manager position makes, uh, you know, the bottom tier of the type of, uh, salaries that we would or should compare him to if we were to be objective, which is to compare him against his peers and not just throw out a number out there, uh, without putting it into context. Uh, so it's very important for the city of Wichita, for us to, you know, we want the best people to work for us. We want to retain the best people. So this salary should actually reflect what, uh, peers are making, not only in other cities, but even in our region. And right now, I, I think we're, frankly, uh, you know, our manager is towards the lower tier of when it's compared to how other, other similar public employees and similar leadership roles are being paid. So I wanted to point that out. Now, moving forward in the evaluation process, um, I have, uh, suggested that we get more data. Um, I want to make sure that, moving forward, that we have data from, uh, the, the directors, data from the stakeholders, um, and that we could get public opinion, not so much on an individual, because I think it becomes politicized when you focus on individual, individual, but also data on how the functions that that individual oversees. Uh, how, how do people feel about our, our aquatics plan? How do people, how, how are their experiences over in our golf courses, or, and so on? I think that we should have more objectable data as we move forward. And I've been working with this council, and I plan to work with the next council, to ensure that we have much more, um, database or data to work off of, so that we can be more efficient when it comes to, um, when it, when it comes to the, these performance evaluations. Uh, and we could professionalize this process, I think, even a bit more. And so with that, I did want to just point out some of, I, I think some, uh, concerns people have, and to make sure that we have the full information out there as far as what the process was and how the council came to this decision. And also to say that this is, again, 2020, we will begin 2021's, I believe, in the next couple of months. Uh, so with that, um, it seemed, uh, oh, we got someone who jumped on. So, uh, Councilmember Sorillo.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, I just wanted to make it clear that I will be supportive of, of this vote today. But, at the same time, I am responsive to what the mayor is saying. Um, I am hearing overwhelmingly, in my district, from the people who are active at the most, um, in terms of the, the manager's salary, at what point is enough, enough? Um, I get it that we have to stay competitive. We have to keep our manager's salary competitive with the goals and the objectives that are placed in front of him or her. Um, after this raise, our manager will be making a quarter million dollars a year. And to the many people, an overwhelming amount of people in District Three, that's hard to fathom. It is hard to fathom. So I have to represent my people, um, and make it known that this is tough. This is tough for them to accept. That's all I have. And I do, Bob, thank you for your service. Uh, I agree that you have done a wonderful job for the city of Wichita. I, I don't deny that. In my short tenure here on this council, I have appreciated your advice. I have appreciated your, uh, suggestions. I have appreciated, um, everything that you've done to, uh, help guide me in, in, quite frankly, things that I didn't know about. And, and I appreciate that. And along with the advice from my fellow council members as well, um, I thank you for your service to the city.
And just to, again, put the money figure into context, the, I believe, a recent story, I just tried to pull it up, I had in my notes, um, said that the president of Wichita State University ma- makes over $400,000 a year. Um, our superintendent, um, makes over $300,000 a year, according to an article. I'm not sure if these have been updated or changed. Um, our city manager manages over 2,000 employees. And the way our system is set up, even though I get in trouble when we have too many potholes or when there's a pool broken, uh, my job as the elected is to then go and direct the city manager to look into it. There's a firewall up between the electeds and the administrative side. Um, and with that, it's not an easy job. And I think that if we want to attract and retain, uh, good managers to our city, we have to ha- have a, um, a, a realization of the ecosystem in which they work in. Uh, we don't want our city manager, uh, to, to, to be, you know, lowest on, on, on the, on the scale here when it comes to regional salaries and when it comes to, uh, his peers in our region. So with that, it sounds, again, I agree, out of context, you know, it, it sounds like a significant salary. Uh, when you weigh it up against, uh, people who work in our city, who have similar responsibilities, but actually even someone at a lesser level, because it's not running the entire city, uh, it's very comparable. Uh, so I do want to point that out. Uh, so with that, is there further, further discussion on this? And if not, I'll recognize Councilmember Frye, who wanted to jump in here with a, the motion. The floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I'm happy to make the motion that the City Council approve the city manager's performance evaluation and compensation increases as described, uh, in the green sheet. The 2019 increase is retroactive to December 14th, 2019, and the 2020 increase is retroactive to December 12th, 2020.
Second.
Motion is made and then seconded by Councilmember Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote.
Mayor, your vote not working.
Uh, it just popped on.
Okay.
Ever receives seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll start off with appointments. Are there any appointments at this time? Seeing none, we can go into, um, Councilmember, uh, comments. Councilmember Claycombe.
Thank you. Um, today is my last meeting as a city council member, and I just wanted to say that it has been an honor to serve the residents of District Six and the residents of the entire city. It has been absolute pleasure to serve with my city council colleagues. Um, it has, I have learned a lot from you and have enjoyed collaborating on many projects during my four years. And then it has been a privilege to work with a really talented and experienced staff. And I can't say enough about our staff and how they have helped me during the four years, and helped the residents of this city. I, I don't think people, um, appreciate sometimes how much our staff really cares about this city and the residents. I've never asked a staff member to do something to help a resident that they have ever turned me down. And so, Bob, I, that's, that's, um, a tribute to your leadership, uh, and then just a, a tribute to our staff that we have here. So, I want to thank you all for this opportunity.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Councilmember Claycombe, it has been an honor to serve with you as well. Appreciate all your service to our city and your district. I thought you did a great job as a council member, and it's been fun to, to work with you as well. Um, Councilmember Sorillo, just got appointed a few months ago. It's been great to work with you these last couple of months. I appreciate your insight and advice and conversations we've had. Um, and, and thank you for your service to District Three and the city. And lastly, just to the public, um, the District One Advisory Board meeting that we had scheduled last night got rescheduled to, uh, January 18th at 6:00 PM over at Atwater. Uh, we'll have four zoning cases that meeting. So if you were looking to go to that meeting, it would be January 18th.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Um, I too want to echo the gratitude and thanks to Councilmember Claycombe and Councilmember Sorillo, and that's already been expressed from the, from the Vice Mayor. Um, I've known both of you prior to serving on council, and so I knew you'd be great council leaders, and you have. Um, we'll miss you up here. Um, this is a difficult job, and you both have handled it with grace and professionalism, and I thank you for it, and our community should thank you for it as well. Godspeed.
Councilmember Sorillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't get my button pushed in time, so I apologize for that. But, um, yes, as others have said, this is also my last council meeting. Um, I wanted to thank this council for, um, putting their trust in me and choosing me to serve out, uh, the rest of the unexpired term, um, in a transition period where our district had been suffering, quite frankly. Um, moving forward, I wish only the best for the new council members. Um, I, I would remind them to keep, um, the peoples, listen, always listen to the people, what they are saying, and, um, and listen to your staff that is guiding you. Uh, they are the experts. Um, they are the ones who have the knowledge in, in their field, and I wish them only the best moving forward too. So, uh, thank you to this council for, uh, putting your trust in me, uh, back in March. To be able to serve, it's been, um, an utmost honor and privilege to serve, uh, the, the residents of South Wichita, where I've made my home my entire life. So thank you.
Further discussion. I just also want to thank Councilmember Sorillo and Councilmember Claycombe for their service. Um, it's, uh, and it takes a lot to, to serve in public office and in public life, and we appreciate, uh, folks who have the courage to step up and step out, uh, and to take the time to serve our community, uh, in public office. So thank you to, uh, both of you for your service. Uh, with that, we will have a reception directly following our meeting. So if folks are here, are interested, the reception will be, uh, in, across the hall in our conference room. Uh, if there's no further discussion, then I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receives seven yea votes, that motion does pass, and we are adjourned. Thank you.